Good evening and welcome to the September 4th, 2024 meeting of the Calabasas County Council of Governments and Transit Agency. Please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I understand we have a council member, Cantalano, requesting to attend remotely?
Yes, and his address has been posted on the agenda.
Okay, great, and we need a motion for that?
Let's ask Monica.
Good evening, members of the council. Member Cantalano is participating remotely under the traditional provisions of the BARN Act, so we do not need a motion for that. His remote location is identified on the agenda, so we can move forward with the meeting, but all items will be taken by roll call vote.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, um, the last month's meeting, August 7th, we had a closed session pursuant to Government Code 54957. There was no reportable action. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda is expected to be routine and non-controversial. It will be voted on at one time without discussion. Any council member, staff member, member of the public may request an item to be removed from the consent agenda. Is there any member of the public requesting an item to be removed? Seeing none, any staff member, any council member?
Chair, Muterties, I would just like to abstain from the minutes as I was not present.
Understood. Okay, okay. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Pat, second by Gary. All in favor, please say, oh, we're gonna do a roll call.
Okay, so for COG consent agenda items, the votes will be Ben Stoffer?
Aye.
Gary Topinelli?
Aye.
Caroline Schirato?
Aye.
Isabel Mancata?
Aye.
Justin Catalano?
Aye.
Tim Muterties?
Aye.
And Pat Bettinger?
Aye.
7-0-0.
Okay. We're at the public comment section. Any member of the public can have up to five minutes to speak for items that are not on tonight's agenda. Anybody wish to speak? Seeing none, we will move on to Caltrans report, which I believe is in writing. Oh, cool.
Hi, I'm Sylvia Diag. I'm the Investment Planning Manager for Caltrans and the Division of Planning, Local Assistance and Environmental, and I'm here for Gregoria Ponse tonight, and I have an update. On the Federal Transit Administration, they have released a fiscal year 2024 Tribal Transit Program. This program is specifically for tribal public transit services in rural areas, and any applications are due November 13th, 2024. There's a total amount of $9.16 million available for this grant program. The Federal Highway Administration has also released a grant for the Low Carbon Transportation Material Program. Applications are due November 25th of this year. There's a total grant amount of $800 million available. And then on the regional planning side for Caltrans, we're currently awaiting the fiscal year 2324 OWP final deliverables, and we're also awaiting the draft existing conditions for active transportation and recreational trail plan, the ATRTP. Those are all the updates I have.
Thank you for being here and thank you for your report. Does the council have any questions? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Next up, city and county reports. Just county first, okay. Robert?
Good afternoon, Robert Pakenger, Public Works. The roadside safety audit project in valleys throughout the county has started. We have approximately 220 miles of roads that are going to receive new signs. Some time ago, there was a roadside, roadside safety audit that was performed, and the contractor and consultant identified locations where signs needed to be placed. So now therefore you see many new signs along the roads, mostly around curves that will help people see these curves at night. There's approximately 4,500 signs that are going to be placed throughout the county. Some signs are being replaced. They need to have the correct retroreflectivity on the signs so that they're visible at night to the drivers. Areas that we've covered, San Andreas, Jenny Lynn, Valley Springs, Campolseco, Bursen, Capropolis, Vallecito, Arnold, Avery, Murphy's, Calabaritas, San Andreas. There are many roads that will be receiving signage for this, as part of this project. It's anticipated that this project will be complete by the end of the year. Okay, so that's that, the county road, roadways sign retroreflectivity upgrade. I'm gonna skip the next one on the capital improvement program. Craig Pedro will cover that one, and I'll go to the Valley Springs School Safety Improvement Project. That project has begun. The first items of work that they performed were some improvements around the Jenny Lynn Vet Memorial District Hall so that the traffic for the school, the school traffic drop-off can utilize the area a little bit better. So there were, there were a few improvements that they had to do there. That's been completed. There's work already started on the roadways. The work progress will be one lane first, and then they'll move over to the other lane to keep the traffic going through. Complaints, very few. The school has received some comments and questions about that, but the contractor did a pretty nice, robust getting out the word to the neighbors, to the residents, and the school helped quite a bit getting the word out to everybody. The work should be complete. It has about 40 working days, so the end of October, so that work should be complete. Traffic should be getting on there probably in the beginning of October. Okay, any questions on that one? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Robert.
Can I, can I ask Caltrans something before we get into the wagon trail project? Recently, Monday of this week is a holiday, and then yesterday, Tuesday, we had some very serious accidents in the Toyon area, the Toyon School, right at 12 and 26 intersection yesterday. And then further up a little bit, and we had some deaths in the one that happened on Monday. And then the one yesterday could have been a lot worse than it was because if, some of the pictures show, it was direct head-on impact. And there's a lot of traffic. There's always been a lot of traffic in the mornings and the afternoons there through that area of the interstate or the highway. And now that the schools, because of the budgets, aren't doing buses the way they were before, there's a lot of parents that are having to drop their children off, so it increases the traffic a lot more. And I don't know what Calcons can do, and maybe they can do type, some type of study to see what we can do to at least reduce speeds there, at least during the crisis times we have while the school is open and while the, the school districts are going through the budget changes that they are. Because I just see it happening more and more and more because people are now having to drop their kids off and then rush off to work and get to work. It was already a high traffic area at that time, people coming down, going to their work in the valley, people coming up, come to San Andreas, Angels Camp, wherever you go to work. And now we've added a tremendous amount of traffic there, so.
Okay, yeah, let me take your request back.
I would like to reiterate everything Mr. Topinelli said. It's somewhat, you know, these single-lane highways, you know, each direction are, are almost like a bottleneck during these times of the day. And for the very reasons that he discussed, and, you know, just to bring it another step further, you know, a lot of these parents aren't just driving their kids to school, they're getting their kids their licenses earlier and providing them vehicles because of the times of work and everything else. And this actually is a scary thing because this is just the reason I won't get my daughter a car right now, even though she's becoming that age, you know? And she would be driving through that corridor also, which is a big concern of any parent.
So we have the high school here, and those few, the kids now that are coming up to the high school go through that corridor also during the morning time and the afternoon time. So it's just a tremendous amount of traffic there. And again, in two days, we've had major accidents, so.
Okay, thank you for letting me know. I'll take it back. Thank you.
Hello again. I wanted to come back and give you guys a little update on the wagon trail project. I've passed out what was a presentation I gave to the Board of Supervisors, and I think next time I'll, I'll coordinate with Melissa and I can maybe do a nice, you know, video of, of the site, and it'll be exciting. There's a lot of things happening, you know, out there right now. But, you know, the first page of this presentation is the same one I gave you guys before, just showing that two-thirds of the, of the wagon trail project phase one, the main line, is in operation, you know, right now. And most of the activity is happening between, you know, Pool Station Road and then the eastern end of Appaloosa area. And right smack dab in the middle of that is where the, the new major wall is being instructed, and that's really the controlling feature of, of the project. I saved you from the three-mile video, drone video footage. Again, I'll, I'll bring more dog and pony stuff maybe next time, but again, didn't want to take up too much of your time. Some of the pictures that are in here also show excavation at what's called Cut 5, and that's just east of Pool Station. A lot of dirt is being moved there. Actually, the contractor's been totally on it. This is even an update for two, two board members, but last when I reported to the board that they'd moved about 29,000 cubic yards since late March, which isn't so significant, but they've increased that total to around 70,000 cubic yards now that they've moved. So they're, they're on it. So it's about 40,000 cubic yards additional since we last spoke with the board. So they're moving, and most of that's coming out of this Cut 5 area just east of Pool Station Road. Then there's a fill operation. Where's that dirt been going? They've been building up both sides of where this wall's gonna go. They can't take it any further because they gotta get the wall, you know, going first. So that's, that's really the major activities that are happening. There's a picture in here, it's called leveling pad. Just draw your attention to that. And that's where you can actually see, it's just a, it looks like a concrete footer, but it's a Bigfootter. That's what they're gonna start piling the, the concrete blocks on top of and behind that concrete pad and up against that wall that you see behind it. That's where they're gonna be digging down and then forming up, and then pouring a concrete channel for Nassau Creek, Nassau Creek. And really important that we get that, you know, get that done. Winter is coming. They know that's a high priority, but the weather has been good, and they're making good progress, you know, on, on that. If we go to the next, next page of that slide, they, you can see some of the spring water that has just blessed that area. It's been troublesome because even though the creek stopped, you know, giving, there's still a lot of spring water that they've had to deal with throughout this, but that's, I just call it, call it one big front stream in there essentially, getting that water out of that, out of that area. Let's see. The major work not, not yet completed is again the concrete wall for Nassau Creek and the removal of the temporary diversion that we have going on there, completing the, the MSC wall, and then the new Hunt Road connection at, at Highway 49. And then the last major thing that'll happen, it'll be next year, will be the switch of traffic to the new highway segment. That's between Pool Station and Appaloosa. What can drivers expect in the near term is just continue to keep a watchful eye out in that area east of Pool Station Road because that's where the big trucks are taking the dirt, you know, across. But they're actually getting to a point where there's no where else to put it because they were so aggressive in getting the, the stuff moved that they could. There's some blasting that needs to happen in that area, but they're getting to a point where they're gonna have to take a pause in some, some of that dirt work activity. The next page of this is a, just a summary of the, you know, the budget, if you will, for the project, something I know that the board has been really pushing hard, where are we on this thing financially? We've got everyone to turn in their homework, fairly current now, and as of the end of July, you can see that we spent, it's about, what's it be, about 59% has been spent out and then, or obligated towards a project, and about 41% left, you know, in that, in that budget. Anyway, watching that very closely. A big note, if you look at the lower left-hand corner of that, of that chart, it's showing the road impact mitigation monies that are in, in this pot right now. That's everything we have. So that's the fund balance and even the projected income for the current, you know, current year. So that would be essentially the equivalent of the kitchen sink is, is in. So that's there, and I wanted to make sure that, you know, folks were aware of that. Last page is just anticipated project completion. That was one of the major elements. I, I wasn't able to share with the guys last time, but it's official now that based on the new schedules for this project is they won't have Nassau Creek Channel finished, get the water back in the channel. That, that'd be sometime in November. The MSC wall is a multi-month activity that can continue on even into the wet parts of the season. That, they have scheduled, on their project schedule, having that completed in April of next year with the final segment of the new highway alignment not being open until June of, of next year. And it just took a long time to get the, you know, get the change water that brought it, you know, that related to the MSC wall. That took months for the county to work out, you know, with the contractor, you know, and so forth. And then to get the thing, get that area dry enough where they could actually start, start building down there. It was about the time that I got here, June 11th is the first day. I was down there probably three days later checking it out, and it was still plenty wet, you know, down there when I first started. And you can still see the water, and they've been work, you know, working on it all this time. So anyway, that's your, your update. Do you have any questions?
I'm looking at your leveling pad photo.
Yeah.
When was that taken?
Oh, this, now it's been, what's that, three weeks? About three weeks ago.
Yeah, if you don't, how are you gonna stop if it starts raining and they don't get any further than this and that? We're gonna be, that's all gonna be down where this concrete wall is.
Right.
So we really need to do something to make sure that that doesn't happen.
Yeah, they're, they're moving every day on it. We do have, you know, we have our owners meeting every Monday, Monday morning, and then we have a construction team meeting. That's everybody, you know, from the general contractor, engineering contractor, to the whole project team, looking at this thing every week, and they're, they're making, making hay on it. They're really working hard to get out of there. They, they have to, and they, they know that.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Craig. Next item on the agenda, number 12, resolution number fiscal year 25-4, approving the fiscal year 2024-25.
We have the city.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Right over you.
And I was even given your name. I apologize, Steve. Oh, he's online, okay.
Good evening, members of the board. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Good evening, good evening. My name is Steve Williams. I'm the interim city administrator for the City of Angels, and I appreciate the opportunity to give you an update on the COG-related capital improvement program projects in the City of Angels. We have three outstanding projects. The first of which I'd like to talk about is the Collector Road striping and sign replacement project. Happy to report that the work on that project is complete. It was completed in the month of August. We anticipate receiving the final invoice and paying the final invoice towards the end of the month of September, and then we can completely close that project out. Any questions about that project?
I don't believe so.
Okay, thank you. The next one is the routine maintenance project for $100,000. We do plan on much-needed road maintenance in the City of Angels, and we have intentions of completing that work and completely invoicing all of the work by the end of this fiscal year. So we anticipate using that money before July, I'm sorry, June 30th of 2025, and look very much forward to using that money to make those necessary routine maintenance improvements in the city. The final project is the Angels Creek Bike and Pedestrian Network. That's a more longer-term project. We filed our notice of determination about one year ago. The current stage of that process is the Cultural Resources Study. The Cultural Resources Study was submitted to Caltrans, I believe in August, maybe in July. I believe it was submitted in August. It's there at the Caltrans Cultural Study Office now. Once Caltrans completes their review, it will then be forwarded to the State Historic Preservation Office, and they anticipate, once it gets to that office, it should take about 30 days roughly to complete that process. And once that approval is gained, we will have completed the Section 106 process and completely complied with all the environmental requirements, which is what we need to move on to the right-of-way process. So it's currently going through the environmental process. Once we get that final approval from the State Historic Preservation Office, we will move into the right-of-way needs. And again, this is a long-term project. We're very much looking forward to getting into the construction phase, but we need to get through the environmental and the right-of-way first, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions for Steve? Seeing none. Thank you, Steve.
Okay, thank you very much.
Item 12. Resolution fiscal year 25-4, approving the fiscal year 2024/25 overall work program, Amendment Number One and overall work program agreement with Caltrans.
Thank you, Vice Chair Muterties. As the council is aware, annually, staff brings Amendment Number One of the overall work program every year, usually in September or October. Staff has closed out and reconciled fiscal year 2324. So in your handout of Amendment One, I've highlighted the top. This is the carryover balance that has been certified and submitted to Caltrans. The total Amendment Number One equals 1,545,357. This is a decrease of approximately $66,512, and has detailed in the staff report all of the changes. I have highlighted on the amendment three major ones. Work element number three, regional planning and coordination. That work element was increased approximately $44,000. It was the addition of the Mark Thomas contract. And then on work element number eight, which is our RTP, that work element has decreased as well as work element 18, which was due to project delivery. So as they're moving through in the planning documents, invoices have come in, and so those budgets have decreased. I'd be happy to enter, and answer any questions you may have.
Seeing none, I believe this is an action item. I would entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Christine, or Caroline, I'm sorry, and seconded by Pat.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote for item 12. Ben Stoffer?
Aye.
Gary Topinelli?
Aye.
Oh, sorry.
Your voice, you gotta turn on your mic.
Trying to fill those big shoes, huh?
Apparently, aye.
She's got.
The city, I'm telling you, they wanna run everywhere.
I know. Caroline Schirato?
Aye.
Isabel Mancata?
Aye.
Justin Catalano?
Aye.
Tim Muterties?
Aye.
Pat Bettinger?
Aye.
7-0-0.
Would be 6-0-1? Amanda's not here. Oh, no, but wait, oh, shit, we have other placements, okay, never mind. Okay. All right, item number 13, council report, verbal.
I will just quickly report, if you've driven through Angels, you've probably noticed that our park, the playground is well underway. We are hoping, I believe, end of this month, Caroline? Is that correct? Yeah, end of this month, we'll have the playground finished.
It's looking good.
Yeah, happy to be on that.
And I'll just report that Ms. Fuldorff reports that she's doing as good as possible considering the circumstances. That's all.
Okay, transit report. I don't see Cynthia. And item 15, staff reports.
I have nothing to report.
Ma'am?
I have nothing to report.
Erin?
I have nothing to add to the report that was included in the packet.
Sorry?
Nothing to report.
Transportation planner reports.
That was not that.
Okay, all right. The next meeting of the Council of Governments will be October the 2nd, 2024, at 5:30. Would the council like to take a quick break before transitioning it to transit?
Yeah, we can do that.
Take a five-minute break? We'll reconvene with the transit agency. We have, I'm assuming I'll reiterate the motion to approve a council member, Cantalano, attending remotely. Next item is consent agenda is expected to be routine and non-controversial and will be acted upon by the council at one time without discussion. Any council member, staff member, or member of the public may request an item to be removed from the consent agenda. Is there any member of the public that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda? Any staff member? Any council member?
Yes, I need to abstain from the minutes from the August 7th meeting.
I would also like to abstain from the minutes from August 7th meeting.
So noted.
I thought we had had a conversation with Monica a few months back about, about having to abstain if you missed the meeting because of the minutes, and I thought, if Monica's still here, she could clarify for us?
Good evening, and thank you for the question. So if you are not present at a meeting, it is not necessary to abstain. By voting on the minutes, you are simply stating that you have read them, and so you are able to vote on them whether you are present at the meeting or not. I should also identify that an abstention goes with the majority. So if you abstain and the majority carries with a yes, then your votes will be counted towards the yeses.
Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification.
I will continue for my, towards my abstention as I was not present at the meeting and I did not review the meeting to make, make sure they correlated with the minutes at the same time.
So noted. With that, I would be, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Gary.
I'll second.
Second. By? Oh, Erin.
Roll.
It's Isabel.
It's the heat, isn't it? It is, it's warming here. We all know who you are.
Roll call vote for CTA consent agenda items. All right, well, Gary Topinelli? Gary Toponelli?
How do I vote? Aye.
It's just a good way to go.
I almost had a vote for you as you were going.
Ben Stoffer?
Abstain.
Caroline Schirato?
Aye.
Isabel Mancata?
Aye.
Justin Catalano?
Aye.
Tim Mutertis?
Aye.
Pat Bettinger?
Aye.
What's that?
Seven zero one.
Six zero one.
Sorry, six zero one.
All right, next item. Approval of Calaveras Transit Agency regular meeting minute, I'm sorry, that's consent agenda.
No oversight of public comment?
Yes, public comment, five minutes. Comments should be limited to items that are in the subject matter and not on tonight's agenda. Does any member of the public wish to speak? Seeing none. Item number seven, minute order approving the award of professional services contract with Aspen Street Architects for architectural and engineering services.
Thank you, Vice Chair Mutertis. Staff is recommending the board approve a contract with Aspen Street Architects for the design phase of the new transit facility. The contract would be for a not-to-exceed amount of one million, one hundred, ten thousand, eight forty-six. The board has been working towards this over the past two years with the purchase of three-point-four acres right off of Highway forty-nine last October. Multiple appraisals, lots of decisions. I'm happy to bring this item forwards. CTA staff released a request for proposals on June eleventh. We received four proposals. The selection committee scored the proposals based on the technical criteria that was listed in the RFP. On page nineteen, you can see the breakdown of the scoring. The scope of work is identified as an Attachment A, and it starts on page twenty-eight and also includes the project schedule on page thirty-six, which we are anticipating the design phase to be complete October, November of two thousand twenty-five. The fee schedule is listed as Attachment B, and it lists the cost breakdown by task. If you look at this page, I wanted to point this out. Page thirty-eight. On the very top right of the chart, five sixty-two, two thirty-nine, plus the bottom where it says subconsultant total, five forty-eight, six oh seven. That amount totals the one million, one hundred, ten, eight forty-six. I've also identified a reserve contingency, approximately twenty-five percent, which totals two hundred and eighty-nine, one fifty-three. This reserve contingency would only be accessed or utilized with council or board approval. So if anything were to come up, it would only be the council that could release the contingency funding. I'm really excited to be working with Aspen Street. They are here in attendance. I'd like to introduce Nathan Morgan. He is the lead architect. And the project manager is Christina Euribis? Euribis, thank you. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council might have.
No questions?
Just to thank you for withholding a twenty-five percent contingency.
I learn when I watch the meetings.
And proceeding cautiously with those change orders that you move in the future.
Yes.
Yeah, and it has to come back.
Each time. Yes. And also, the team will be coming back to the council, you know, asking for your input and showing you our progress as we go. So all of your work and decisions over the last two years, I'm excited to be moving to the next phase.
No other questions? Is there any public comment on this item?
Guess not.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Toponelli, I didn't mean to cut you off.
That's okay. The schedule that you have here, are you guys pretty confident that you can meet that schedule that's here? And have, by October of next year, we'll have your drawings and architectural and structural and the whole thing here to go? Okay, thank you.
There are no other council questions, I would entertain a motion for this item.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ben, seconded by Pat.
Roll call vote on item, item seven. Ben Stoffer?
Aye.
Gary Toponelli?
Aye.
Caroline Schirato?
Aye.
Isabel Mancata?
Aye.
Justin Catalano?
Aye.
Tim Mutertis?
Aye.
Pat Bettinger?
Aye.
Seven zero zero.
Congratulations.
Thank you. We get reports quarterly, correct?
Yes, we will.
Just confirm, right? Thank you.
We're gonna do some renderings, so if you're on. We have some people to go to a mic if you're gonna keep talking, please.
I'm sorry, we will get quarterly reports, correct?
Yes, we will bring them to the board.
On where we are, aren't we?
Yes. Thank you.
All right, agenda number eight. Minute order approving fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-four slash twenty-five operational budgets, amendment number one.
Thank you, Vice Chair Mutertis. So with the approval of this contract, I'm bringing back Budget Amendment Number One. As you can see on page sixty-four, there were multiple reasons to bring back this amendment. Number one is the design contract, which I have budgeted at the one-point-four. We also have had a change in our operations contract due to increase to the operations contractor, paratransit services. We had to reopen the contract. I'll be bringing that contract back to this board in October. It had to be presented to FTA for approval first, and we just received that on Friday. So I am recommending an increase to the operations contract in the amount of one-oh-one. And then we are, I don't wanna steal Aaron's thunder, but I've budgeted for three new buses. This brings the total of the operations budget to three million, five hundred, fifty-eight thousand, six seventy-five. If the council has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
No questions from the council. Is there any public comment on this item?
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
What kind of buses are we getting?
I would defer to Aaron.
That would be type, catalyz. Kind of our standard size that we have right now.
Okay.
No more questions? I would entertain a motion to approve this item.
I'll make the motion.
So moved.
Moved by Justin.
I'll second.
Seconded by Isabel.
Roll call vote for item eight. Ben Stoffer?
Aye.
Gary Toponelli?
Yes.
Caroline Schirato?
Aye.
Isabel Mancata?
Aye.
Justin Catalano?
Aye.
Tim Mutertis?
Aye.
Pat Bettinger?
Aye.
Seven zero zero.
All right, item number nine, Calaveras Connect fiscal years twenty-two, twenty-three slash twenty-four year-end performance report.
That's gonna be me. Hello, board. So we've included in the packet the performance report that I put together for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. It's not incredibly lengthy, but I thought I'd pull out just a couple of the numbers on service effectiveness and efficiency and just kind of briefly review them. Our biggest number, I think, or one of the most important ones to me, is our total ridership, which for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four was thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and thirty-two, which is actually our highest recorded ridership numbers since CTA formed. So I'm pretty excited to say that. It's a forty percent increase over last year's ridership numbers. Thirty-one thousand, two hundred and thirty-one of those riders run our fixed routes and eight thousand, one hundred and one run our dial-a-ride services. It equaled or amounted for a total of thirty-six dollars of cost per passenger. That's technically a number we wanna see lower, as low as possible, and it did go down twenty-four percent compared to last year. So it's going the right direction. Our vehicle service hours, we had sixteen, or approximately sixteen thousand hours total, which was an eight-point-six percent increase, which is an increase. However, our passengers per hour also increased by twenty-seven percent for a total of two-point-four-four passengers. It's an awkward situation, but it worked out. And then our cost per hour actually went down three percent and is at eighty-eight dollars and fourteen cents, which is actually right on target for what was set up a handful, I think when CTA was formed, that was our, eighty-eight dollars is our target for our costs. So it's really nice to see it there. Like I said, it went down three percent, so hopefully it can continue to go down and exceed our target. Our vehicle service miles were four hundred and thirteen thousand, eighty-nine miles for the year, which was up six-point-two percent. However, our passengers per mile also went up. It's point-ten passengers per mile, again, an awkward number, but it's a thirty percent increase compared to last year. So that's a very positive thing for us. We wanna see that number go up or increase. And then our cost per mile was three dollars and four cents, which was a decrease of one percent, which again is a good thing, we want to see that price come down per mile, so.
Awesome. Does the council have any questions for Erin?
I do.
Hi, Gary.
Isabel, your mic's on? Fairbox recovery. I know since COVID, they stopped the ten percent. We're only at one, eight-point-one percent here. Even though all the increases that we have, that's somewhat of an increase. Do you know, Erin, if we're gonna ever go back to that ten percent?
I don't have a definitive answer. I know that since COVID and since they paused it, the industry has been questioning whether it's a relevant measure of effectiveness for transit. I haven't heard anything from like the state agencies determining one way or the other. It feels like they continue to look at it because they can have paused it through, I think, twenty-five, twenty-six is the last I heard. So I would imagine that they are, they haven't discussed it with me, but I'm assuming they're looking at it and thinking of different ways that transit might be measured going forward.
Can you keep us up to date if you hear anything?
Of course, absolutely.
Thank you.
Can I just add, when you're looking at the eight percent fare box revenue, that is calculating on the old measure, the one that the council and the board is familiar with. But when you see the audit, it will be higher because through that executive order, you can use your federal dollars. So we keep. Yeah, but we know you want to see the true. Yes.
Are we allowed to use our advertising? Sorry. Advertising income to offset that too, so that's all included.
So the revenues you can use are, we can use interest, we can use the fares that you get from rides, and you can use the federal dollars. Oh, and surplus, which we will actually have this year.
We can use that to show the recovery. But this is the bottom line, eight-point-one.
Yep.
Thank you.
Item number ten, paratransit services operations contractor report. Do not see Cynthia. Number eleven, staff reports.
I will let Erin give the good news.
I didn't really have a staff report pass my transit report. We have received.
Just the, yeah.
We received our second Fairfield bus two weeks ago, I think. Well, we, sorry, we called a Fairfield bus. We received a second bus, so that totals three vehicles so far, and we have two more coming. Yes, and then we're looking at ordering our third one, third van, which would, because our Dodge Chrysler van is very much past its useful life, so.
And that van will be a hybrid?
The Toyota van will be a hybrid. And as we receive those vehicles, we'll also be able to surplus two buses, so we'll see that come in the next fiscal year.
Have anything to report out, Erin?
Just that we went and saw a new bus, and it was really nice. Comfortable.
Anything to report out, Erin?
Nothing to add.
Number twelve, adjournment. The next scheduled meeting for CTA is October the second, twenty-twenty-four, at five-thirty. Thank you for your attendance.